Good evening, everybody. The first item is the pledge. You all understand that? Say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is roll call. Kevin Braitski.
Here.
Brian Danitz. Bob Giliana.
Here.
Tavon Mishler-Fish.
Here.
Mark Braden.
Here.
Greg Sims. Luther Williams.
Here.
Nikki Witkowski.
Here.
Rick Burns.
Here.
You have the form. Thank you. Any correspondence at this time?
Just so you know, my cell.
Or not?
No.
Any correspondence at this time?
No.
No? Thank you. Okay, we have two cases, both are public hearings. The first case is DW-20247. Advocate is Home Management Incorporated, care of the property with DVG Team Incorporated. Project is Taco Bell in South Haven. Location, South Haven Plaza LLC, southeast corner of McCool Road and US Highway 6, La Brazo, Portage Township. Zoning is CM, moderate intensity, commercial district. Request seeking design waiver to allow for destruction of the new Taco Bell territory from a follow. First, buffer yard along the south property line. Second, non-motorized transportation pathways on all sides. And third is entrance and drive proximity.
This is a public hearing. We do need to read the rules of conduct for a public hearing.
Conduct of hearings. At a public hearing before the commission, the petitioner or proponent shall first present the facts and arguments in support of the case. Those who oppose the petitioner shall follow. The petitioner shall have rebuttal and shall be within the discretion of the commission to impose any time limitation, either the petitioner or the respondent, and to limit public comment to those determined by state statute to be interested party. Written monstices shall be accepted by the commission but need not be read into the commission's record. This then concludes the public hearing. To maintain orderly procedure, each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. The presentation of the case, the burden shall be upon the petitioner to supply all information necessary for a clear understanding of the problem. The commission may continue hearing when in its judgment the petitioner has not provided sufficient evidence on which to make a determination. Every person appearing before the commission shall be abided by the order and direction of the president. Discourteous, disorderly, or contemptuous conduct shall be regarded as a breach of the privileges of the commission and shall be dealt with as the commission directs.
Thank you.
And maybe an opening statement on this case, staff interview. They did appear before DRC. You are correct, there are three design waivers that are being asked for this evening. Staff also had further recommendations for board to consider. We've asked petitioner to consider buffering, screening of some kind unsolid. Because you're going to relieve the upper yard, we still think it very important that some kind of screening be allowed for you to consider.
Thank you. Just before we get started, the sound system's not working.
No.
If you walk and move up, you can hear. Some of us talk soft.
Yeah.
I do for one. Wait, wait, you walk and move forward, please, so you can hear. Thank you. Hey, sir.
Good evening, blank commission and empty.
Stay there.
My name is Greg Lorigan with DVG Team, 1155 Trial Line Road, Crown Point, Indiana, 46307. We're the surveyor and civil engineer for the developer, Natron Corporation, for this Taco Bell project. Jim Sada here from Natron Corporation as well. So I do want to just kind of give everyone here a little bit of a background. Like Mike mentioned, we were at DRC a couple of weeks ago, but just background for everyone in this meeting. So after I go over the background, I'll get into the variances of her requesting. So Natron Corporation is proposing an approximate 1,900 square foot Taco Bell located along the east side of McCool Road, just south of US 6. You can just kind of see it on the screen here. Looking at street view, this is facing east on McCool Road, just south of US 6. There's a kind of strip mall back here to the east and immediately to north is Centure Bank. So the Taco Bell proposes in this undeveloped green strip here. I think Mike alluded to it, but we do have substantially conforming letters from planning department and engineering with the county. So again, we're here today to seek three design waivers ahead of a hopeful follow, hopefully a approval at DRC meeting to follow. Started courting this project with the county back to center of 2023, actually. Couple other things. So this project is a little bit unique. The building is proposed to be constructed under a ground lease, so it's going to be part of the entire parcel that the strip mall is on as well. It's very common for a lot of Taco Bells to be deconstructed in this way. As was stated, the existing property is owned CM, moderate intensity, commercial. With that, I do want to start kind of looking at the site plan itself. If I can get there. And you guys should all have this in your handouts that I gave you as well. So this is kind of a challenging site that had a lot of unique things going on with it. We actually probably went through four or five different site plans kind of in the process of getting to this point. The existing strip mall building to the east actually has some truck loading docks. This is kind of where my hand is on the screen. So we tried to design this project to accommodate trucks to get in and out of here. There's an exhibit in your packet with those truck turn movements where they can come in from the north driveway, pull in through here and back in and get out. We also had a sanitary sewer that is leading to Centure Bank that splits right through the middle of our property that's kind of already at minimum slope that really couldn't be relocated. And then we're also basically trying to build this project between the two existing driveways that are out there that I showed earlier. Some other things, as far as the south driveway, both the driveways were basically reusing what is there. The only, we're not modifying the north driveway at all. The south driveway, the proposed curb line is at the existing south edge of where the pavement already is. So we're not proposing to widen out anything closer to the properties to the south. We are widening the driveway apron just to the north to make it safer for truck turns. So we're trying to enhance everything we can, even though we can kind of a small footprint in here.
Can you go back to the picture of the actual property and say that again, just so?
Yeah.
So your?
With the top view?
This picture was taken from a cool road.
They're going over a street view.
Yeah, this is just a street view picture.
Right.
So yeah, Taco Bell is kind of would be in the middle of that picture roughly with the parking lot and so forth. So the driveway on the right is to the south and the driveway to the left is on the north.
And so you're not touching that driveway on the north?
Correct.
But what are you proposing on the south?
So the south driveway will be reconstructed for drainage, but it's not going to shift any closer to the south than it already is. So basically, we're putting back what's there. We're just recreating it a little bit and adding some storm sewer.
Can you put your hand back up, that little thing? Can you talk about the screening that Mr. Gable was mentioning?
Yeah, so, oops, went too far. So we are proposing some landscape screening. Is that page? We did get some feedback from staff about this and so we've actually proposed enhancing this quite a bit. So what we're proposing is, you know, you can kind of see the south curb line north of those proposed arborvitae bushes. But we're proposing five-foot-saw arborvitae planted fully height stacked basically as close together as you can. So that should help with landscape or help with screening visibility, sound, headlights, and like that.
What's the height of the arborvitae?
Five foot is what they start at with the king grow saw.
No. How tall would they be when you plant them?
Five feet is what we're planning on right now.
Okay.
If that's an issue, we can adjust.
As long as that would cover any headlights from truck.
It should be higher.
Chairman, we need to finish the presentation and do public hearing.
Okay.
So just again, getting back into the overall projects. We're not here for variances on drainage. And we worked through all that with the county. So to stick to the waivers that we're here for, kind of what we're talking about now. Number one is the class C 40-foot buffer yard along the south property line in accordance with the US 6 corridor overlay district. As I mentioned, there's an existing driveway and pavements already on the south side with substandard per code. There's only seven to 10 feet of width between that pavement and the property line right now. As I mentioned, we will be providing additional landscape screening throughout. So that's variance number one that we're requesting.
Correction, the design waiver.
Sorry, design waiver. Second, design waiver is related to not providing a pathway on all sides of the property in accordance with the US 6 overlay district. An existing sidewalk is already present on McCool Road and we are going to provide connectivity to that sidewalk. So that sidewalk is kind of right where my hand is. We'll provide curb ramps across the driveway and the sidewalk will connect into the site. Just the lay of the land of this project, it just doesn't make practical sense to provide pathways all around this if it's basically a parking lot that would take you nowhere. But we do feel like there's good pedestrian access on McCool. Lastly, there's a requirement in the UDO for the southern driveway would typically need to be 150 feet away from the next road to the south, which is rare to drive. It's only 119 feet right now. And again, we're trying to reutilize the existing drives that are already there. If we were to push that drive to the 150 feet, we basically can't make this project work. It's not feasible. So I guess in summary, and I know our application is a lot more verbose than even I am, which is surprising. In summary, there's numerous pre-existing site conditions that prohibit our ability to meet the above three requirements. These include, but are not limited to, the driveway locations that are already there, the sanitary sewer that I mentioned that's serving Centure Bank that really cannot be relocated, the existing adjacent loading docks, loading docks and the necessity to circulate trucks associated with the loading docks and just traffic efficiently through the site and the project. We believe this project is in the public's interest by enhancing the existing conditions of the site. It is a permitted use within the zoning that's out there in the overlay district. And I think it will be a good project to provide economic value as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. So I'd like to turn it over to the public. Anybody want to speak in favor of this? In favor? Seeing none, anybody want to speak against or have any questions about this project? Yes, yes, come up, please. Other speaker's not working, so just state your name and address before you speak.
All right. Stay right there.
Sure, sure. Okay. My name is Sean Wright. I live in 34 Raritan Drive. I just, I'm looking at this. This looks like a lot of land uses for a really tiny building. It also looks like a, let's say the Taco Bell sales, a very specific use building because of all the very tailored do a drive-through. And is this the best option for this? Like is this long-term financially good for this lot?
Yeah, we answer all the questions.
All the questions during public and I do have an opportunity to answer them all.
Yeah. And it's just like I, because you know, I live right below. Like this that we're not touching, this lane that we said we're not touching, that crumbles in the neighborhood constantly. And I just worry about how much money this brings in versus what it possibly can take out of the area. And that's, I don't know, just, but just.
Thank you. Is anybody else here? Be, yes, state your name and address, please.
I'm Free to Wright. I'm in Hock from 34 Raritan. Not that it matters, but we don't want it. We don't want the extra traffic. I don't know, I walk. If he doesn't take me somewhere, I walk. And those are my walking paths. I go through that little walkway. And a lot of people out there, we walk. We have mobility, scooters, stuff. I'll go next to them. We don't want it.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak or any questions? Seeing none, I'll turn back over to you and if you can respond to those questions.
Sure. I guess as far as the best use of the lot, we were brought under professional contract to design a Taco Bell for this site. As I, you're talking about using up a lot of space. As I mentioned, we actually, Jim can attest to this. We went through like five or six different site plans. We had the building rotated different ways. We're trying to fit it in an area where we're not going to negatively impact the existing business as well with the loading docks and so forth. So a lot of that gaming space that you see on the east side is really just to make sure trucks can get in and out of there. My understanding is that loading dock isn't used a ton, but we don't want to degrade the value of that property. As far as the north drive, the way, what we need to do with our site, we really don't need to do anything. So we're just proposing a curb there right now. As far as our stormwater system is designed, we do need to regrade the south drive and put it to give inlet and stuff. I didn't get into the details, but we have significantly oversized the storm sewer pipes to provide inline detention. So we've got really big, like 24 or 30-inch pipes and then they get choked down into like an eight-inch or something like that before it heats up. We're meeting the county's requirements on storm water. We also have a stormwater fall unit. So I think with the exception of these, design waivers we're requesting, we're aligned with county requirements on things.
Thank you. Okay, I'm the floor. So a public hearing. Turn it over to the board commissioner.
I, just going back on those drives to the north and to the south, what are they currently used for?
So the north drive, or the north drive is kind of a sheer drive that goes in and out of the strip mall areas to the east and Centure. The south drive is really more probably of a access. I mean, there is loading docks in the rear of the building to the east. So that's a combination of loading docks and fire access primarily. Now, there's a chance people may drive through there, but.
Pretty good for your area, it looks like.
Yeah.
So where, how will people enter into the Taco Bell?
They'll be able to enter from either side, either one of these driveways.
Okay, so they're going to come into the driveway and then they're going to turn into the property from either direction. From the north driveway with the south drive?
They can, they can come in from either direction currently. I mean, Jim could probably speak to this if one needs to be a primary versus the other. I would say the south driveway is probably going to be more primary currently just the way the drive-through is. So they can still come in here, but if you come through the drive-through, the parking lot to the south, this will be the primary exit, but be the south. But I would say people probably enter from both, if that makes sense. I'm going to try to go back to that aerial angle referring to. Yeah, so here's the north driveway by Centure coming into the strip mall. And here's the kind of rear driveway that we've seen site. And it goes to the east side of all those loading docks that were enclosed. Correct.
Questions? Do I? Who's there? Ken?
Yeah, the screening, you're talking about an area that has several utilities running on the south side of the drive between the properties to the south. And the separation is what, only seven or eight feet? I think period is six.
Yeah, between the curb line and the property line is, you have seven to, seven to eight feet typically?
I don't see much success with your plantings there because of all the utilities and maybe disruption in sort of maintaining the utilities. Because I think there's a sanitary sewer that passes on that side or a rock.
There is a sanitary sewer down there. There is a gas line also. I mean, those arborvitae aren't huge holes for depth, but it's certainly locate the utilities and work with NSCO if something became an issue. Which I know.
Work with NSCO case. Exactly, because there could be points where they may need to clear out the vegetation in order to access, whether it's the wastewater treatment facility or the sanitary sewers or with NSCO or in the other utility, because that's just the general utilities. What I was going to suggest is maybe you look at a six-foot fence barrier. That would also help with base of the noise. Any trash that might be blown into the yards, that would help with that and also block off the light without question. And you wouldn't have to worry as much about the grid carry. Now, just having said that, I'm still an advocate of having some reedery, because that presses up the site as well. But I think for a practical matter, to insulate the neighbors to the south from the light pollution, the noise, and maybe loose paper, whether it's Mew or not, they'll be coming across, maybe even six. It's likely to blow across. But that's what I'm going to suggest is that we are going to, to deal with the buffer yard that way is to encourage them to put up a six-foot board fence, something.
Full privacy. Pardon? Full privacy fence?
Privacy fence all the way across the south border of where Taco Bell is. I'm not sure which lots that would cover to the south.
So there's, there's two properties directly to the south. We'll never have a screening from everything we're doing. So there is an existing chain link fence.
That's not going to do it.
But I understand. So.
And somebody brought up the issue with the crumbling driveway. I think you should be aware, these are private roads. The county is not maintaining plowing, rebuilding these roads. I doubt that we ever would be. I would kind of discourage this public entity from doing that, but that's the owners of the property are responsible for that. Overall developers, and they have agreements, from what I understand, for plowings, sealing like that. Speaking of which, how are you going to manage your snow on that area? Because I think right now they were trying to push the snow up on that vacant area.
It's a good question. I'm, you can speak to that at all, Jim? As far as snow management?
We critically hire outside contractors to do the job.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. What's your name?
My name is Alchandra Sata. Jim Sata. I'm the franchisee.
Oh, okay, okay. Did you get that?
And I've negotiated a deal with landlord. They will tell me the property, but they will lease it. So that's why I ended up leasing. And I also own one just a couple miles west of this. And I also have one in Hibra that I opened last December. And we have no issues with getting the small service or any other services. And we never had any issue with local community. We always work with them.
I would just probably add that Jim is not in regular contact with the folks that own this property. So as far as how they manage snow here versus the neighbors, I'm sure they'll do their best to work together, make sure it's placed somewhere in a safe manner as I've described.
Well, you know, we have all positive elements when we enter property on the street. We don't do those kinds of things.
Yeah, we want to make absolutely sure none of this comes into the McCool driveway or into the street. That would be unlawful and that would create a division for the county as well as the traveling public. However, you know, I identified something that I suspect would be a problem in the coming winters that you and the rest of the property owners need to address to figure out what's going to happen here. Because you're going to want to remove you from your parking lot in order to take care of your employees and customers. And we just need to make sure that you have that figured out ahead of time.
Yes. Nikki?
I appreciate George's, or Kevin's, sorry, Kevin's comments about the arborvitae because I was already having concerns myself about them. When you say that you only have seven foot, I was doing some fast math and there's six to 10-foot spread on the Teckies and six to eight-foot spread on the blue points that you're suggesting on your plan. So if the ones get towards that 10-foot, that means you're either going to encroach on the neighbors or you're actually going to take away from your driveway on placement. It also just concerns me, it's a tough area. What is their longevity? I would question if you ask your neighbors, they might appreciate the fence better and be more hardy in the long run. Doing something like a fence might be more hardy in the long run. Again, just by what I've looked up, all these different varieties. And speaking of the plowing, you know, again, my husband plows snow. He's done it for businesses. All I would just encourage is just be prepared if you're going to take over some parking spots. Definitely he does. If he has to, he takes over like a couple parking spots. So just have a plan. Technically, I'm proposing against the fence, but I also know from my husband and a roundabout way, the law enforcement will take it if it goes in the roads in the wrong place.
Thank you.
But we have rights for this one. We have no right to disturb the carpet or any of our just property.
Mm-hmm, correct.
My staff would like to comment on all the commission.
I agree with Kevin, Nikki. I think a fence would be the best option and some greenery in there to make it look nice.
You've got low and small.
Well, and a five-foot arborvitae and let's face it, the top three feet go like this. So the headlights are going to be going right between the trees until they actually grow to maturity. So it's really kind of a moot point. It's not going to help you. So that's not, that's not.
Thank you.
So who actually owns the building? Is it the owner of this property? You're going to own the building?
Yeah. I lease the land.
Okay.
I belong here. Most of the private choices are by this. Here, nothing changes with that.
Is this the same kind of arrangement that you have with your other two Taco Bells?
But Hibra, we own it. Too much rest we own it. On that, I thought of fifteen Taco Bells I have only two on this property. We think that both plants are in center and on that side.
A question I have for you. Is there a restaurant sit-down also? Is this is a drive-to-type restaurant?
There is a sit-down.
There is. Thank you.
I think comments will be made about the screening. If you want to make it a condition for fence as opposed to the other, that's your prerogative. Might we suggest we steer away from the wood fence? It would not be so durable. And that other materials are probably a lot more durable, so is that something for you to consider?
And a maintenance option. Well, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve BW 2024 Home Management Incorporated for the design, or approve the design waivers of public areas on south property line, on motorized transportation pathways on the side. Entrance and drive proximity, but subject to them putting a fence. And when I was thinking fence, I'm thinking, uh, like Mike, we could do a six-foot chain link fence with inserts. I think they have materials now that are, uh, much more substantial. A wood or a cedar fence, you're right, it won't last very long. But, uh, some of the newer materials they have are more permanent. I, I would suggest, uh, that we investigate that with the staff. But, uh, one of the things, that'd be the most permanent would be a chain link, six-foot chain link with slats in it.
I think it's important maybe to consider too, that not only must it screen, but it's got to be attractive to the eye on the other side.
Yeah, that's true.
So if you make that a condition, when they come in with their, asking for their permits, that could guide us. That's what we wish to do.
Just a comment, they have some really, uh, nice looking composite that's.
Right. And I've used some of it myself. It's fairly permanent and.
So Kevin, could you please restate your motion? Because you had a preference with a chain link. Can you just restate your motion to be a little bit more general?
Yes, yeah, that's what I really intended to say. I suggested that as one, but, uh, why don't we just go with the preference for a composite material for the fence in the panels? That way we'll be consistent on both sides as far as appearances.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second? Just valid vote.
I'm sorry, without the microphone, may I ask him second with the motion?
I do.
Thank you. Kevin Brysky, yes. Paul Gilianna, yes. Pamela Fisher Fish, yes. Barb Rickles, yes. Luther Williams, yes. Nikki Wathowski, yes. Pat Burns, yes. Rick Burns, I know of Pat Burns.
Sorry.
What did you pass?
Thank you.
I think you play the mission staff.
Thank you very much. Thank you very often, thank you. Okay, next, next case, yeah, next case is AN dash two zero two four dash one. Advocate for County, uh, the Fan Commission. Location one to the side, Indiana Avenue, appraisal. Request recommendation for amendment of the Porter County Unified Development Ordinance. UVO pertaining to stormwater.
Commission members before Amanda, Amanda, Amanda over from our staff as our MS four coordinator for the county. Really good job, I've seen her work before. Time to time, we have to make changes to our policies, procedures and rules when it comes to management of stormwaters. A lot of this, as Amanda explained, comes from sources higher than ourselves at the state level and federal level. So what you're going to do tonight is hear Amanda's presentation. Make a motion, sending up the recommendation to the commissioner, if you so wish. And then if you do so, then it will also be presented to the commissioners to be approved in the form of ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amanda.
Hello. Um, so as my cable just stated, I'm Amanda and the underscore program coordinator for Porter County. This program is administered.
But you're going to have to try to project a little.
Little louder, okay. This program is administered by IDEM, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management and complies with the EPA and National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System's permit requirement on water quality. MS four, Sandy, or municipal, so separate storm sewer system. Stormwater is considered a pollutant. Discharge from urbanized areas, municipal areas. This program became effective in 1999 and applies to entities responsible for MS four conveyance regardless of population touch. MS fours have six minimum control measures to build programs and report annually to IDEM on our progress of compliance. IDEM issued two new permits in December 2021. You'll see list here, the MS four general permit, which regulates us and our discharges. And then the construction stormwater general permit, which regulates one acre development project. So most projects are usually disturbing more than an acre of land. That means they, they need to not only apply to our program, but also to the state. Some of these revisions were chosen to improve language and consistency in our UVO and construction standards. The revisions address the missing pieces of our program to comply with these permits. The other new requirements in these permits were either already part of our program and we have a very vast and extensive program, or they were not explicitly enforced by our program, they're not required to be. The time and effort, uh, put into these revisions was to ensure that all requirements were met and that, uh, there were no missing pieces. Our Porter County standards, as I said, are extensive and covers the majority of the things that these new permits require. These are the different documents. They are all existing documents that will contain the proposed revisions. So at the end, you'd please feel free to ask me as many questions as needed. I'll be able to provide my perspective, the department's perspective, as well as IDEM's intent. For chapter five fourteen, this is the environment, environmental, environmental, uh, chapter. It was already existing. So what we are doing, we're just adding more requirements that are important for construction sites or general sites in Porter County. So we have waste disposal. This gets into a bit more, um, broken down and specific listings for what trash and garbage is considered, especially on construction sites and what we expect when we go out to these construction sites as they're active and closing. So it also mentions that construction and domestic waste must be managed to prevent the discharge of pollutants and wind-blown debris. So this is already an expectation for our department. We just didn't have it written. So this is an effort to comply with the state standards and to, um, make our program a little bit more foolproof. Proper storage and handling of materials. These are different materials that will typically be stored on large construction sites. Again, the same statements apply. The de-watering operation is something that we did not have anything written in our requirements, but they are a requirement of these new permits. De-watering typically has to do with if there's water in a construction site, maybe to remove the water in order to construct. There is a lot of times including sediment that will be discharged. So this sets a precedent for what is allowed to be discharged and what needs to be filtered before discharge. Concrete and cementitious washout areas. When concrete is being poured on construction sites, there needs to be a washout area that is fully contained so that pollutants are not discharged. This sets a precedent for anybody working within Porter County. Again, these were requirements that we actively, uh, required because of the state, but we did not have a local ordinance stating what we wanted. Fertilizer applications. This is also part of the new construction permit. We now have a section for it, just saying if a fertilizer is going to be placed, please don't do it during rain events or after rain events or before rain events so that we don't wash more fertilizers for waterways. Floculents and polymers are specifically for detention basins or sediment basins on construction sites. So if there is, for some reason, the water cannot be filtered properly, there are polymers called floculents that will bind with those sediment particles and make them sink to the bottom of those basins so that it is not discharged when, um, when the sediment basin functions. Restoration and cleanup. Occasionally, our department will come across an issue where there's a restoration required due to a construction site or some other issue. This sets a precedent for what we require and, um, gives us a point to direct or enforcement if a problem were to come up. And finally, the new gasoline outlet was actually a requirement of the MS four permit, saying that if there is a new gasoline outlet or a current outlet replaces the tank, that there are best management practices installed to prevent these hydrocarbons from ending the stormwater runoff. So we don't go into specifics here. It's up to the developer to prove to us that they have complied with this requirement. Chapter seven fifteen is our erosion control standard. These updates specifically were for compliance for the construction stormwater general permit as well as, um, streamlining, streamlining the current language that was in there. So some of the other language covers the notice that all projects that disturb one acre or more require an IDEM permit. The other addition has to do with single and two-family dwellings. The only difference is removing a word because we require, um, designed engineering plans, not sketches. That's a practice that we currently use and the UVO did not have correct language. Requirements of the erosion incentive control plan. The same is being applied here. We removed the word sketch to ensure that the plans submitted to us were designed by an engineer. The erosion control practices to be included. This is where we mentioned the concrete washout again. This is where concrete is being poured and it needs to be washed out into a leak-proof basin to make sure that none of that washwater reaches our waterways.
And can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The first one on there, the IDEM.
Yes.
Permitting. What is IDEM looking for in that case? What are they asking the developer for?
The permit, um, I do have a copy of it, if anybody's interested in looking. It is a multi-page, I think there's forty-six pages in that document for each of these developments to comply with. This has been a requirement since these permits were enacted a long time ago. These are just a new version that we are complying with. Any project that disturbs, meaning they scrape the dirt off the land or they rub trees, um, which means they remove the tree fruit. Anything that disturbs an acre or more is required to get a permit through IDEM. They have a lot of information on their website about these requirements. It has to do with construction plans, which we already require. The only additional thing from what we already require as a base is a SWIP, which is a stormwater pollution prevention plan showing how are they going to prevent stormwater runoff from being polluted and leaving their site. So there's multiple parts of that that I could get into if you had more specific questions. Chapter seven point two eight is our stormwater standard. This is only being updated with the same issue of the word sketch being removed and updated to include the drainage plan, what we currently review for. So when a single-family home is being, uh, applied for, we look for pump, wells, how stormwater is going to flow on the site. We look for FEMA flood zone, DNR flood plain, wetland boundaries. Those are all things that we complete you already, we just didn't have it written in the ordinance. So that is now written and we can point you that if anybody has a question for it. Chapter eight is only an outline of what our construction standards actually contain. So if you look at the actual page in the ordinance, it's just a list of, um, multiple headlines saying this is what's in the main document. It was inaccurate according to what is actually in our supplemental design and construction standards. So I updated them to just accurately portray what is in that document. Ten fifteen is the erosion control permit section, so it's related to seven fifteen. But it deals specifically with, um, enforcement, what we are looking for when it comes to submissions and if the permit expires. This also had language on sketch plans, so that was removed. In addition, I also included language on the permit being onsite for the, for the full duration of land disturbing activities, not just during the day. That's what it currently said and that's not what we enforce. So that was updated to match what we currently, um, request. A side note with sediment is there's a few more items on this list that are going to talk about sediment and the reason why we don't want to discharge. A few reasons why we don't want to discharge are, um, the clogging of fish gills, covering fish eggs, clarity in water. It destroys aquatic habitat. It also causes more scour and bank erosion. So there's multiple reasons why we don't want sediment to go into our waterways. In the construction standards, there are a couple additions that are being made. The first one is in compliance with the construction stormwater general permit from IDEM that sediment control process practices for sediment basins draw from the surface of the water column. The whole purpose of a sediment basin is so that when the water rushes off of the current land disturbing activity and sediment goes into this basin, that it settles out before discharge. So when you see an outlet type on this basin, typically higher up, so that the water has to rise to get out. Otherwise, all of that sediment settles at the bottom, helping our water quality and reducing the amount that's discharged. So this new, uh, requirement was new with the new permit as of 2021, saying that the top layer must be drawn from and if that is unfeasible, then use, the use of floculents or polymers will be an acceptable, um, extra use. So if you can't pull from the top, whether the, um, one example is if the top water freezes, you can't pull from it. So instead, if you, if you, um, have to come up with a separate implementation using floculents, polymers or, um, maybe phasing the project to be, you know, not having to affect by weather patterns or. We, our department is flexible when it comes to these kinds of things. So if your project doesn't apply to one or the other, we are more than willing to help this problem solve on this thing. Topsoil stripping and stockpiling. This is a best management practice already conducted by most developers. They don't want to lose their stockpile of, um, topsoil. So this is just a written example, a written reference point so that if we see that someone does not have that included on their construction plan, that we can implement it at that time. The reason being is once a development is complete, topsoil needs to be placed back so that, um, grass and whatever vegetation will thrive on that site. Eight point nine is the location and configuration of downsew. We get a fair amount of complaints in our department about drainage between neighbors and there's just a lot of frustration. We understand that. This is an effort to reduce that time when it comes to the amount of complaints that we get for downsew being placed near adjacent property lines. This is a point that we can reference. It will specifically reference pump pumps, footing and perimeter drains, and then roof downsew. And final change in the construction standards are the pre-construction meeting and the required inspections. Both of those are just changing the old name, rule five, to construction stormwater general permit. And then we have two new construction details that have to do with, um, those environmental standards I mentioned in five fourteen. This is the de-watering system. You'll see a pump or a bag like this. When the water is being pumped out, it typically is full of sediment. So how are they going to filter it out? It should be to a de-watering bag and not directly to a tree. So the detail specifically outlines what we want, what we don't want, what we, what our expectations are during construction. The other one, the, the concrete washout system. So the truck will wash out into the pits. These are all good examples, fully lined, fully contained, no runoff that's leaving that container. We see often on construction sites that they either do not have an out. We see often on construction sites that they either do not have an out, a washout at all, and they're dumping directly on the ground, or they have the containment system, but the liner breaks and then it's actually leaking anyway. So the new requirements are an effort to try to reduce this issue and help us with Finally, the last two here are just making some edits on the, they just did some ordinances. The flood damage ordinance, or lifted discharge as far as the lifted discharge ordinance was reviewed. No additional information was needed to comply with the new permit, except for the phone number that was listed was outdated, and I wanted to update it to our new, or our current department phone line. So that's just the update there. And then the flood damage prevention ordinance, there was a phrase missing from the language. It was accidental. DNR requires this flood plain ordinance as of 2022, so Porter County implemented our own in 2022 that reads almost exactly the same as the DNR model ordinance. The only thing missing was a phrase about non-residential structures being constructed on permanent landfill, meaning still being brought to that site where the building will be built. So it doesn't change how we enforced it because it's based off of the model ordinance, I just found that it was missing language. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, good job. It's a public hearing, anybody want to speak? In favor or any questions?
I just have a question.
Sure, you have to state, you have to state your name and address, please.
Maureen Glimmer, my address is 704 Oatson Road. So we, myself and the neighbors are questioning and have concerns about our stormwater management. As well, and we pay that in our property taxes, but we don't feel like being properly managed. I don't know if this is important to discuss that, but it's out on the agenda or on our management, so.
What are the issues?
So, for example, on my property line, the, I would say, it's the west side of my property, which is my side, it doesn't have a ditch. So all of the runoff from the road goes right into my property, and so all the sediment from the road, the rocks and everything, our current, my vegetation, and my trees, my cotton ground, et cetera. And we just had a road redone with tar and shit, there's excess gravel, all of it is washing right on to my property, double space, to get people to run down.
Thank you. Anybody else have any? Yes, sir.
I got a good one for you.
Say your name and address, please.
Yeah, Bobby Allen from Oatson Road. Okay. And I have a farm out there. Okay. And in the back of my file was Kaseki Ditch. Probably heard of that. And I've been there since I was 14 on aisle 77. And nothing's ever been done, floods my field, and there's stormwater out there, and you're saying, is anything's ever going to be done and stuff? Boya! Yeah, boyah. And I said, okay, like, what will be done to the field? And then now, stormwater, the new, maybe that's not here tonight, stormwater. And I had her up there, very nicely, and stuff, I asked her about it. And she said that, yes, the water and the beavers, sounds odd, but actually, this is stormwater, and it's supposed to take care of beaver problem on Kaseki Ditch. Kaseki Ditch was all the way to Michigan, you know, right? And there's nothing being done, field floods, and now it's just become, you have to see what the, believe what it looks like and stuff. The last person that came out there and stuff, said, you know, right there, there's electrical lifts and stuff. I said, okay. He goes, why don't you just put a lift station in? And I said, what? Put a lift station in, put some tire in, and then you can get rid of that water and stuff. I said, by far, for an acre of my farm, you go ahead and put a lift station in, and then, I'm not trying to happen. But pay taxes for this, and it's such a beautiful place out there. And Jackson House, where we're at, I'm right across from Martin Nielsen Interiors, right there, probably familiar with that. And my property starts and goes from, all the way from back to where the water comes flowing through from, the rest of the water ditch.
Okay.
Anyway, the water that comes through that ditch comes from forest folly, you know where that's at. Forest folly brings the water in, okay? And, yeah, people that have legs and some of their Kellys and stuff, water comes through there. And, it's like 16 or 17 feet, and even the sand out there, when they process the sand out there on the next row over, there is a waterway that comes through there that enters into that same place. So, I don't think anything's ever going to come to this, because I think the problem is pretty big and kind of costly, and so far. I've been there since I was 14, so I've been, it's not new to me, and farmers and people and stuff. And they tell me that, yes, we pay for this, but is it going to ever happen?
Okay.
Even to the point that, did you know that you have to take care of the beavers and everything?
Do you want to respond after, after all the questions?
On, on Kaseki Ditch, there's the beavers, we, we went ahead and paid to have someone come out there, come down, cut it out, get there, get rid of the beavers. And they said, you don't have to do that, so that's part of our, we have to take care of the beavers, but nobody's ever been out there.
Well, we're going to get a response from you. We, you have a response here shortly, bringing all, all the concerns and questions down. And if the man that's waiting for an answer responds or something.
It, uh, I said, it just seemed like it was, I had everybody here and stuff, so listen to me, so listen to me wine and stuff. Some cheese in that wine, anyway, but.
Oh, thank you.
So, anyways, we're going to start doing it tonight or later, and I don't think anything's going to happen. I mean, I just like to have it, be aware that that does go into with Michigan. Everybody that dumps something in, from farm, from everything, farmers used everything else, goes through there, all the way over to, just want to put it on, so you know that it's a problem.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
No problem, thank you.
Okay.
Sir, any questions or?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement. My name is Jeffrey Bonnet, I live at 166 E 750 North. And on my street, I live on the south side of the street, and on the north side of the street is where the ditch is supposed to be. Also, my property is three, approximately 300 foot wide, and I have culverts that are underneath the road where the ditch hasn't been maintained. I've been there since approximately 2010, and I believe the ditch has been dug out maybe one time. I don't know if the county garage keeps records as when they do maintenance like that, but what happens is the ditch does, you know, it gets the surface rain and all that stuff, but there's a little area on the property on the north side of the road where the ditch is at. I do not have a ditch on the south side of my road, and what happens is, in the springtime with the rains and stuff, all the water just basically flows through the culverts, and I have, I have videos of it, of a river of water going out to my private property. Now, I don't understand why I thought that the culverts should take my excess water and put it in the ditch, like 500 feet down where they technically do the job, you know, they take out of my neighbor's pond and put his excess water into the public ditch. And just the opposite in front of my house, it takes all of it, because like I said, the ditch has not been dug, dug out to hold any water. All the water just basically comes and runs straight into my private property, so. I just wanted to make that statement. I've had stormwater out at my address before, so it is, my name is up in that department.
Thank you.
But nothing's.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions or concerns, or close or public?
Do you want to respond? Mr. Burton? May I start off, for him? Some of the issues that the people brought up are more structural in nature, quantity nature, maintenance in nature. After the meeting, we'd be glad to sit and meet if you give your contact information, reach out to you, approach you directly. I would like Amanda to respond as far as it relates to her presentation, but outside that presentation, we'd be happy to meet with the residents and talk about their issues.
Even the conservation dumps into the Kaseki Ditch.
So for the first comment, I think, I can.
You speak up a little.
Everybody's comment, if it has to do with right-of-way, and I know that a couple of you have submitted concerns, it sounds like those are documented. If it has to do with right-of-way, that would also be our highway department, so it would be something that we would look at as a whole and see what can be done. So I'd like to ask junior questions about your concern. Kaseki Ditch, the maintenance is 75 feet on either side of the ditch, and it's only as far as is regulated, and I'm not fully versed with where it's regulated, so I'd have to take a look and see exactly to answer your question. And then for drainage, that's on your property, if your ditch hasn't been dug in a while, that should be revisited. That also would have to do with right-of-way and how that all functions. Unfortunately, with rain events as of late, everybody is experiencing a lot of rivers in their property because of the amount of rain and saturation of our soils. But as it, and what you've just mentioned pertains to what I talked about today, I don't think it overlaps, and most of this has to do with active construction. But you did mention asphalt, so we can address that as well.
Okay, it's basically that. I'm a close or public hearing. So, for it.
Um, boy, have we got a couple billion dollars to be able to straighten all this out. Sounds like it's a pretty big project for, I mean, it's not only this ditch, it's all of our ditches, probably in some state, either repair or not repaired. And that's a concern to a lot of people that are adjacent to them, and I'm just not sure exactly how you're going to do that. I think you do need to consider what, what the neighbors are talking about there and be able to answer them.
Kevin?
I just say I appreciate, Mike J. Bowe is the director of this stormwater development department now, so have that conversation with him. We're not really here tonight for that, we're really here to address our new ordinances, but keep in mind that the intensity of the rain events have increased over the last 20 years. We're not necessarily getting more rain, but it takes longer for it to level out because in a shorter period of time, we're getting more rain through that event. And what we're getting about the St. Annial rainfall, it's just really, we get hammered, we all get hammered, I mean, without exception. So just bear with the department, we'll go to that. Let me get back to the ordinance. I belong to an association that wrestled with EPA and the state for a couple of years as they were introducing a lot of new rules. We really, I hate to say we don't have a choice, but this is a state mandate that we have to take care of. And it seems reasonable now. A lot of the things they're originally asking really went beyond the pale, in my opinion, but I think we have some good people in the state that argue for a more sensible approach, more affordable approach. So these adjustments in our ordinance just keep that department in compliance, and they're in the process of new permits. Every few years, we have to do a new pollution control permit, and that's kind of where we're at, and this is one of the things we could take on if we can correct it and get punished for it. It's like everything goes downhill, it went from EPA to IEDM, the state, to the local governments to take care of, and without any kind of compensation from either the state or the state. I think everything I see is in order and looks good.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, because of just how this is written, like this is IEDM AN-2024-1. One thing I'm curious about is when I look at our list on the agenda, ordinance 1412, Stormwater Management Program and Stormwater Management Board, ordinance 1519, Stormwater User Fee. I don't see those. What were those?
Those were two that had the term Rule 5 or Rule 13, and we wanted to update it to say the new permit, which are MS4 GP or the SGP, but Attorney McClure said that that was not required for update because it's not actually part of the ordinance, it's not part of what we enforce, it's just in the above whereas language. So we didn't have to make the change, it was only going to be a word change, like a terminology change, and it was decided that we weren't going to do that.
So we're not doing those two?
No.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, I was curious about that, I was about the fee, so. No questions?
Question.
No questions?
Wow. Stay banned, it, only question I have, do we have a ban pass to ban just?
It doesn't change what we do, actually. It only changed, it only helps us, at least we do, at this point.
And I do have a question about enforcement. Do we have any fines at this time to address enforcement, or is that something that'll come later?
We do have an ordinance that states fines, but it hasn't been really used since the department was created in 2016. So it's something that we are going to address in the future, looking at that, do we want that language, do we want to remove that language?
Which, I've got a question. In the erosion control standards and in the stormwater standards, you eliminated the word sketch.
Yeah.
Now, what are the requirements for, you know, what's this going to add to the single-family home crisis? Are they going to have to have an engineering study done by the licensed engineer to take care of this sketch?
That is already a minimum requirement for our applications. When we get an application, SN-24 number, it comes with multiple sheets, one of them being a fully designed site plan with elevation taken from the site, full drainage information, where the house is going to go, footing placement from property lines. So all of that already needs to be on there. The fact that we adopted an ordinance, the UDO that said that a sketch plan was acceptable was never true, and we never acted as if it was. It was something that I found as I was going through these ordinances to update that.
Okay. There was a conflict with your enforcement. The problem was sketches weren't scale drawings, so you really didn't know what proportion were you dealing with on this site.
I did talk with the managers in my department, including the building commissioner, he agreed that this was not an acceptable piece of language and it needs to be removed.
I'll go ahead and make a motion. We forward the recommendation or amendments to the Porter County UDO pertaining to stormwater as listed on AM 2024-1 with a favorable recommendation.
Senator?
Yes. I'm voting second. This is Dallas. It's a solid one?
No, it will hold. Kevin Brightskey? Yes. Bob Gillian?
Yes.
Pamela Schultes?
Yes.
Barbara Reagan?
Yes.
Luther Williams?
Yes.
Nikki Whitkowstein?
Yes.
Rick Burns?
Yes.
Motion passed 72.
Thanks, John. That's just what makes me comment. The directors, Mike J. Bowe will meet with these folks after, take your hands off it. Thank you. Thanks for doing that. Any other business? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Um.
Second. A motion. All favor?
Aye.
All votes? Means adjourn.